Good evening, everyone. Tonight is August 9th, 2023. It is 6:10 PM, and I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to move to approve the consent agenda tonight?
So this is Janet. I moved to approve consent agenda items three through six with the minor edits that I submitted on the two sets of minute meetings, meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions? We'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public open forum, seeing no one in the chambers and no one online? We'll move on to the Planning Commission Report number eight. It was a joint meeting. Elizabeth, do you have anything you'd like to put forward?
Mr. Mayor and Council members, I don't have anything to put forward on behalf of the Planning Commission. Stay tuned for the pool discussion. It will, or I'm sorry, the Residential Zone Business Discussion. It'll come back in September. At our next Planning Commission meeting, it is a regular meeting, and we do have a public hearing on the pool ordinance. So that will, the hearing will be held then, and then we would approve that ordinance. It'll come to you at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. I see ordinance 2302, Chapter 7A Design, Commercial Design Standards, Standards, and then two motions to adopt with edits. Anybody want to speak to that?
Rob, maybe you want to just update on the standing seam part?
Yeah, so on the, on the standing seam portion, I had, had raised concern about that not being able to be used, you know, in the event that it was part of their master plan or as part of their look, whether it's for an accent or it's a corporate thing that they had. But I talked to Dean today per our meeting last night. Elizabeth asked me to reach out to him. And that is able to be used, you know, if we do do a PUD application. But I guess I'd leave it up to the council as a whole if, if we're wanting to put that in as like use as an accent, you know, if, if, if others would want that as far as, you know, using that standing seam as an accent in, in the pictures that were provided. Thank you, Connor, for getting those printed out at a short notice today. So I guess conversation on that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, one, one clarification. If you decide to go in that direction permitted by PUD, I'd specifically change the language on page seven of 12 to say are permitted pursuant to approval of a PUD or something because the fact that it calls it out and says it's not permitted, that sounds like there's a prohibition on it and that you wouldn't be able to change that statement without an amendment of the code. So if you, if you head in that direction, the language we change to is not permitted to permitted by PUD.
What do you think is the least onerous to do? Make that change or just call it out and say that it's, you know, take it off the not permitted and then under the number that talks about accent materials, you, you could add it to, to other, whatever it says, other materials of similar quality? Whatever's the easiest because they, they accomplish the same thing.
Yeah, I think, I think it's easiest to do the are permitted by PUD because if you recall, everything is, every, there's a very short list of permitted uses as a matter of right. So everything's coming in as a conditional use permit anyway. So it'd be easy if they can make the case for it to, to include it in the PUD. Now, you may want to put a percentage limitation, as I heard you discussing because then it looks like it's wide open. Oh, we can have the whole building as long as we get a PUD approved.
And my thought was something like 20 to 25% of accent material. So if it was somewheres around the top of a parapet wall or something of that nature, a fascia accent like is shown in the Sherwin-Williams picture, the first picture in there. I mean, that's, that's a small portion of the building of what that accent is.
Well, yeah, by looking at the Ace Hardware picture, that looks like it's about 50%.
Yeah, exactly. And the rest is a made up masonary on that lower. But I guess just given for, you know, examples really. So. And that's, that's a pretty old building in Forest Lake, so it's, it's fairly weathered. I think it's past its life expectancy, but I think that's why it looks like that.
And is that, Mr. Mayor and Council, if, if that's the direction you go in, is it in each of the districts where it's currently listed as banned, it would be, what I have standing seam, ribbed or corrugated metal panels are permitted as an accent material approved by planned unit development?
I, I, my intent was just a standing seam, not any corrugated.
Right.
Because I, I think, I think the drive is by the Planning Commission and here and them is they don't want a barn look, and I think that's what you get from a corrugated material.
Yep, I agree that that's what we had discussed. It was only the corrugated metal panels that we were questioning if we should leave in.
Yeah.
So if we removed standing seam from the prohibited ones and then under the, the paragraph that says the remaining combination of accent materials may not detract from the overall appearance, I mean, we could just add something there that said standing seam, something, something would be allowable if it did not exceed more than 20% of the facade?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I was calling it out as an allowed accent material by PUD. I'm not sure where, just, just if we want to kind of follow the, the draft that you have.
So, sorry to cut you off, but maybe under number three, it says a third of the wall length unless it is standing seam material must be approved by PUD?
Yeah, that's why I was interjecting it because I'm not sure where all these references are coming from. So I wanted to direct us to the, the document that's handed out that's marked.
Yep.
So if you could give me a page number and...
So number seven of 12 on number three.
And then it's also number three of 12 on number three.
I know it appears in several places.
Oh, sure, sure.
So standing seam would not be allowed or would be allowed?
So we would cross standing seam off of the materials that are not permitted. So like if you look on page three, instead, it would say ribbed or corrugated metal panels are not permitted. And then I think what you're suggesting is still on page three of 12, under number three.
Yep.
We would add something like standing seam materials could be used as accent material under a PUD as long as, you know, if, if not...
As long as it's within 20% of the makeup of the siding product.
Can't exceed 20% of the facade or whatever words you use.
Up to 20%, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
I'm good with that.
I, I have, now I have the concept and we can include it in, if you want to approve this tonight, we can include it as in the final.
I think that would work.
I know you've had this back in front of you a couple times, so.
Thanks, everyone, for hearing me out on that one.
Oh, I'm glad you brought it forward.
So then I would move to adopt ordinance 23-02, amending Chapter 7A Commercial Design Standards with the edits regarding standing seam as we just discussed.
Second, Rob.
Any other questions or discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Yay.
How do you vote?
You're feeling better already, huh, Elizabeth?
Her temper, her temperature just dropped down to normal.
Okay. Number nine, Columbus Policy 04.
Oh, no, no, we have one more motion. Motion to adopt ordinance 23-02, amending Chapter 7A Commercial Design Standards publication summary as presented.
I'll second that. Any questions or discussion? We'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Number nine, Columbus Policy 0402, Building Permit Retention, pages through to, two through eight. We discussed that at a workshop last night. I think we all agreed on what we should do. So I'll make the motion to approve Policy 0402 Building Permit Retention as amended, subject to non-substantive, non-substantive changes by city staff. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Anybody have any questions or anything?
So this is Rob. I do have a conversation or a question on that. We had spoke of possibly including the door hanger portion as like a secondary. Do we need to add that to this?
And that's the language. That's why I'm asking for substantive changes. We didn't have a chance to change it from yesterday to today. So I thought that was a really great idea to add the door hangers.
Do you want us to call it out in the motion, Elizabeth, or is that what you were referring to with the non-substantive changes?
That's what I was referring to, but if you want to call it out, that's fine with me.
If that's what non-substantive means, I'm fine with it.
Okay. I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. So start printing the door hangers. Number 10, petty cash policy. So we discussed that last night quite a bit, going from 100 bucks to 200. I think we all agree that's fine. So I'll make the motion again to approve the Columbus Policy 0904 Petty Cash as amended, subject to non-substantive changes by city staff. Is there a second?
It's Rob, second.
Any other questions or debate or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye. So we can put another 100 bucks in the kitty and make easy change for everybody. Number 12, Motion to Approve Lakes Area Center for Youth and Families Excluded, Excluded Bingo Premise Request.
So this, I can speak to this. So this is a gambling premise license that the Youth Service Bureau is submitting so that they can do bingo at Fall Fest. So the bingo would last from 10 to 12. It will be held in the fire hall. And there is a resolution that got handed out addressing it, and I can take any questions if you have any because she sent me the application too, unless you want to talk to it, Elizabeth.
It's just the bingo for Fall Fest, right?
Correct. Yep.
No questions. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
It's, it's very straightforward application for excluded bingo, and it's required to be completed by resolution.
All right, go for it.
So I would move to approve Resolution 2310, approving the Lake Center for Youth and Families Excluded Bingo Premise License, exclusive, I think. Is it exclusive or excluded?
It's excluded.
I believe it, I believe it's excluded bingo.
Excluded Bingo Premise License, I'm sorry, Premise Permit at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Before we get bingo.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Elizabeth, I'll let Linda know it passed.
And I looked up the Minnesota Gov site. It is excluded bingo.
Excluded bingo? What does that mean?
It's normally excluded unless approved.
Oh, got it. I was trying to think like, what? Is that a special kind of bingo?
Normally excluded unless...
You exclude the corners instead of covering the corners.
No coveralls.
Kevin, Engineers Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. A couple items to discuss. First item is last night, we talked about conducting a water system study to basically plan for the future and what is needed and required with the city's water system. A proposal was provided to conduct that study, and so I'm just curious if you are going to act on that tonight or at a future meeting, so.
I'm prepared to act on it tonight. We had quite a bit of discussion, and we can have more discussion tonight, and, and I think we should take a vote on it. So I think the bottom line is this is just the next step of our freeway corridor water supply for the big buildings and everything else. And again, it's just a study, but the study allows us to go forward and start finding sources to help defray the cost of a one, two, or $3 million water tower. And after thinking it through for quite a few hours last night, that's just the next step. What do you do? So we have the money. The money has already been collected, right, Jim?
Correct.
And that's just waiting to get spent, so I think we should do it, or my, I'll vote in favor of it.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Sure.
So then I would move to accept the proposal for Water Treatment System Study as presented in the August 8th, 2023 memo to Administrator Mersko and drafted by Bolton and Mink in amount not to exceed $35,900.
I'll second that motion. Anybody else want to talk about it or have questions or discussion before we vote?
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Next item is in regards to our pavement preservation project. Jim and I have been discussing 2024, and with that, we're talking about what to do with Running Aces Boulevard slash 147th Avenue. Jim has had to do a lot of maintenance on that roadway over the last few years and, and issues with our crack ceiling material peeling out with the snow plowing. And as we get to look at it, we're probably going to do some kind of treatment next year. We haven't totally decided what yet. But with that, on the east end of 147th where it meets West Freeway Drive, there's some significant issues there. We've got some curb that's cracked and depressed and sinking. It's actually over the trench of the water main. Or is that water sewer on that side?
Sewer. Well, both, actually.
So the curb that's over the, the utilities that are there is starting to settle. There's water that's ponding and pooling, particularly in the wintertime, and we've got a manhole that sits too high, and basically the pavement is not in very good condition. So Jim and I have discussed about doing a rehab on that end of the road perhaps this fall yet, just in anticipation of further treatment next year. And so it would involve taking out a few sections of curb, taking out the pavement on the, about the easterly, about, about 50 feet or so, and replacing it, and adjusting sanitary sewer manhole that sits too high in that intersection as well. So we're considering whether we should bid that out this fall with the thought that maybe there's some contractors that are looking for some fall work. So we're just bringing that forward. Estimated cost in that is probably going to be in the range of $45,000 when it's all said and done. And so that's kind of what we've talked about. I know we haven't brought this up before, but it's just anticipation of our 2024 pavement preservation plan, so.
So what does that mean? What do you, what are the options for pavement preservation?
Well, primarily, it'll be our chip seal project for most of the roads that we have on the plan. We think that something more substantial is required for Running Aces slash 147th, perhaps what we call microseal or microsurface. It's more of a slurry type seal that has more structure to it. It would fill in all of the divots and all the rutting that's going on in the roadway. It would seal up the, the cracks that are exposed because we're losing the rubber material out of those. And so it's a very effective treatment. The county uses it a lot. There's many municipalities that use it. One of my client communities just did a project today, in fact, and it, and it's very effective, and it would give us a number of years before we would need to do a more substantial rehab on that street, like mill reclaim and pave or something to that extent. It'll buy us some additional time to preserve that pavement. So we're not asking for any action on that particular portion tonight, just whether we'd want to consider just making some corrections on the east end of 147th.
Kevin, is this Rob? Is that microtopping what we were kind of talking about possibly doing at one point on Notre Dame?
Correct.
The kind of fill in?
Yes, that's correct.
And you would do the whole thing from Lake Drive?
Correct.
All the way to West Freeway?
Correct.
What's, oh, go ahead. I was just going to ask, what's, what's the problem with that road? Is it, is it a, just it's getting old and worn out or it's had more traffic than what was anticipated and designed for? Or is it a problem like we've had over at Hornsby where it's the underlying?
It's probably a combination of a lot of things. When I look at it, it appears that, you know, pavement over time tends to dry out and it starts to shrink, especially when you get the cracks. The pavement starts to crack up and then those, those cracks start to expand because the pavement, as that oil and the pavement starts to oxidize, it begins to shrink. And so it, it becomes harder to keep those cracks sealed up, and that's part of the problem. There's probably, you know, some, that pavement is probably, I don't know, is it 20, 25 years old now?
2015 or so. Yeah. Well, no, so, so Zurich Street was put in about the time I started, so I'm going to say 2006-ish, and then 147th was probably 2008 or 09-ish.
And do you remember what that road was built to? Is it like a nine-ton standard or what is it?
I, so, so the Zurich portion or Running Aces down to the corner of 147th, that was built by a developer. I don't know what those standards were at that point, and I guess I really don't know what 147th is either. I was just, I was a blade operator back then, so I wasn't involved in, in designs or anything like that. So I, I don't really know.
Yeah. My guess is that just given the section that's there, from what I've seen on some of the ASBILs, it's probably more of a nine-ton type roadway.
And I ask the question because there's a lot of big RVs and multi-horse trailers, hauling horses, and when you get, you know, a horse trailer that's got eight or 10 horses that each weigh close to 1,200 pounds apiece, I mean, you get some real heavy, I mean, it's like semi on it. So I just wondered whether part of the problem on that road is that it wasn't really built for that.
It's very possible. The fact that, you know, when you're looking at a 15 and 20-year-old pavement, I mean, that's somewhat the life cycle where you need to do some additional treatment to it, probably beyond just plain seal coating. And so, so it's, it's due for something just in order to kind of hold it together. I don't think we need to go to the, the length of, you know, tearing it out and replacing it or reclaiming it and paving over it. I think we have another option here that could be utilized to, to extend the life.
And the work that you're doing this fall isn't, it's not like it's going to get undone by whatever you decide to do next year.
That's correct, yeah. This would have to be done regardless. I mean, it's, like, like I said, we've got some drainage issues on that end. We've got water ponding almost out to the center line of the roadway. And, you know, you get into a freeze-thaw cycle and then it's problematic, so.
I suppose you also have to worry about catching that manhole cover with the plow blade, huh? So that intersection is progressively getting worse. So I, I've been watching it for a couple of years, and that curb line gets lower and lower, and now the pavement is lower than the storm, storm drain. So ultimately, what happens is the road doesn't drain. In the wintertime, it creates a ice rink out there. So, you know, I've seen numerous vehicles almost slide into the plow truck or other, other vehicles when they're making that corner. And it, you know, Kevin and I looked at it this year, and I was going to try to do some sort of repairs on my own, but the longer we looked at it and the harder we looked at it, it was just, it's, it just needs to be redone. It's just too much work. So manhole's too high, the curbs are too low, you know, the pavement's breaking up because of the terrible winter that we had last year, and the, you know, the storm sewers are not in great shape either. So all of those things I mentioned are part of that.
So were the storm sewers put in too high or is the road sinking?
The road is sinking. So, you know, the water and the sewer cross under that road or are in that road, and over time, you know, maybe they didn't have a great compaction or, you know what I mean? There's, there's just some nuances there that it's settling and creating us that issue. And I, and I would, I would say that that manhole was installed too high already because if you look at that in the middle of the road, it's a hill going up to the manhole. So that's just, that's creating us some issue too.
So is that an engineering mistake or a construction mistake, you think?
Again, put in before my time, so I, I'm not sure if that's the height that the engineers said it should be at, or if that was just a construction mistake and they, and they left it. I, I don't know. That was, that was done before I started here. What do you think then, maybe just because it's a lot of lowland on both sides of that road, that that might play into it with Pete or, you know, underneath? Or is that something they mucked? You wouldn't know, but maybe Kevin knows they mucked it out beforehand or? I don't know how much they mucked out of there, right? I mean, they dug the, they dug the sewer and the water out of there, so I would, I would make an assumption that they replaced that with decent material.
Sure.
Total assumption on my part because I can't see what's in the ground. But clearly, when you see settling like that, there's a compaction problem that it wasn't, that it wasn't compacted good enough. So, so then it starts to settle out and, and then you see that, so.
Yeah, because actually that was a good piece of ground, I mean, of the whole road. That was the highest and driest. Remember how they surcharged? You know, Bill, if you remember all that? They surcharged, they put 10,000 tires on that whole thing to pack it down between those big ponds there because that was just a, just a cordery road. So no matter what, we have to do something. Anybody would like to make a motion? And this is just for fixing the?
Just for fixing the end of 147th.
Yep.
So, so we'll repair that, and then as part of our seal coat project next year, we'll talk about doing the rest of the road. But that, in my opinion, is the worst portion of the road at the moment. Mayor, if I could, so that, it was $47,000 you'd stated?
It's, it'll be, my estimate is around $45,000.
So I guess what I'm wondering is that, is that covered in our pavement maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the money.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with it then.
So then I would move to approve the project presented by our engineer to, for Zurich and 147th Avenue to repair the curb and manhole, and is it the stormwater drain too?
Yes.
And stormwater drain in preparation for a bigger project, pavement preservation project next year.
I'll second that. Is there any other questions?
Whoops, and a not to exceed value of $45,000 or the estimate of $45,000.
That's the estimate. I, I can't guarantee what kind of bids we would get. If it's well above that, I would say that maybe we, you know, reject him and look for another opportunity to get bid, so.
I mean, but you have to bring the bids back here to accept anyway, so.
That's correct, yeah. So you'd have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, or could we say it's based on the bid that we accept that he brings in, the amount?
Well, I guess we don't even talk, need to talk about that because the biddels will come in. I'll just say the estimated cost, at an estimated cost of $45,000.
And you could just say that... And you could just say that authorize taking bids on the repair and then you can consider the bids.
That's a good...and we would authorize the engineer to go out for bid for the project.
I'll second that. Is there any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
I have nothing further.
That's it? All right. Attorneys report.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, two ordinances to consider regarding cannabis. The first could be adopted tonight. The second regarding the moratorium, I did check the statute. It requires a public hearing. So if you are comfortable with that direction, you'll be calling for a public hearing. But let's start with the first one, which is regulating the use of cannabis in public places as a public nuisance. At your last meeting, you asked us to bring that forward. So this is a draft. It could be final if you're comfortable with it, but let me just kind of walk through a couple of things. In addition, this came up in connection with people potentially smoking cannabis products in the parks or on public property. The model that I was working with considered business areas, outdoor areas, and places of employment. So I wanted to call that out because that was not your specific direction, but the model included it. So I thought, well, let's include it and you can always take it out if you think it's an overreach. So basically, what it does is it defines these areas. And then later in the ordinance, on page two, it says that smoking or using a cannabis product is prohibited in the unenclosed areas of the following places within the city. And the reason it says unenclosed areas is because that's where people might be enjoying the parks or public places. In enclosed areas, it would be banned by the regulation of places of employment. Okay, so this is a place of employment. This is in a closed area. It couldn't be used here either. Recreational areas, that would include your parks. Service areas, that would include, it's specifically defined, places where people gather in public to be served. It include restaurants, lines, you know, outdoor lines, like going up to an ATM and that sort of thing. Places of employment, again, that's the one where I want you to, you know, be clear if you're giving direction on places of employment. This comes out of what you see in other cities where they ban smoking by ordinance. You didn't choose to include tobacco products in this draft. But other ordinances throughout the Twin Cities that have banned tobacco use, they ban it in places of employment. So that'll be a consideration. And then public event areas and then other public places as kind of a catch-all. Then in addition to the areas that have been described, the draft includes a smoke-free buffer zone, so 25 feet with...within 25 feet of those areas that have been called out, the idea that smoke travels. It doesn't respect the property line. What's clearly not included because the statute is clear that you cannot prohibit the use of a cannabis product in a private residence, on private property, except private property that's open to the public. So you can think of an event that takes place on private property, but it's open to the public in general, and we have some of those in our community. Or within a premises of an establishment that's licensed to permit onsite consumption. So obviously, if they're licensed ultimately for that consumption, then you can't prohibit it. So that's the general framework. I can get into any details you like, but I wanted to give you that overall framework to see if you're comfortable with it or if you want to tweak it.
So a question on the consumption within like a licensed place. So say in the event that we have a bar or restaurant that serves like a CBD or a marijuana-infused drink. So that's kind of a popular thing now. That'll be okay under their licensing?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second thing would be, do these same rules apply, you know, as far as open spaces and things like that? In Columbus, I didn't have a chance to look, to the same thing as alcohol?
That's the intent, yes. And any area that's kind of open to the public that you couldn't drink in, you couldn't use cannabis products. I mean, I think, you know, one thing to consider as you go forward, I don't think we've had a huge outcry for public smoking of tobacco products. But when you think about the impact of tobacco products versus cannabis products, it's really...the difference is the smell, right? Because otherwise, it's smoke, it's secondhand smoke. So I'm not advocating one way or the other, but the distinction between tobacco products and cannabis products being smoked, if you will, is the smell. And maybe perhaps it's because, you know, we...it hasn't been legal in the past, so you don't smell it too often, except for in my neighborhood. But... Just a little editorializing. But every time I go out for a walk in the evening. So the question is, the policy question, is there much of a distinction between tobacco smoke and cannabis smoke? I'll leave that to you. The direction in drafting the ordinance was, we're not gonna include tobacco at this time.
So Bill, if you decide...if we decided we wanted to do something similar for tobacco, would you update a different ordinance or would you add it to this one? Because we have one that addresses indoor smoking, I'm assuming. So would it just tobacco indoors? So just assuming that you would just amend that one in...
This draft came with a tobacco and cannabis smoke prohibition. I took out tobacco wherever it was included. So it would be very easily added in the future. You could do that in response to complaints. Well, you've banned cannabis, but you haven't banned, you know, tobacco. Again, I don't think the city's getting a lot of complaints around the use of tobacco in the community.
Well, it's interesting because after we discussed it, I got two people calling me saying, "We hate it when we're in the park and we're walking in the plume of somebody smoking a cigarette." So they wanted us to do it, but that was two people.
So I actually was approached out in public too, and it was the opposite. And they said, "What's the difference? People can smoke cigarettes in the park or they can smoke cigarettes in public places. Why wouldn't we be able to do that?" And I think they were advocating for the fact that they wanted to be able to have the same rights as a cigarette smoker. So I think if we're gonna do it for marijuana, we gotta do it for cigarette smokers too.
Well, the difference is you don't get high on cigarettes. I mean, there's a secondhand smoke effect for sure, and the smell is stronger or less desirable, but...I mean, I think we should get the cannabis thing done tonight. And if we want to talk more about the tobacco thing, we can do that and we can amend it then.
It's easily amended, and I would amend this ordinance because it works pretty well just to add tobacco back. But, you know, I agree that the new thing is the legal use of cannabis products. So you, as a council, are trying to address that proactively here. And if you find that you get a lot of folks saying, "Well, you're not treating cannabis users the same way," I think there is a distinction that you ban alcohol, right, in the parks. And this is...and I don't know if they use the word intoxicating, but it does, you know, there is a change after use that's different from tobacco use. So that can be a distinction. But I think you're right to take the first step, see how it's accepted, and it's easily tweaked.
No, I got a question. What Carlos Avery in Lamprey Pass, that's open to the public?
Yes.
So is that considered a park or is it...
It would be a public place. You can, you know, hunting's a form of recreation, right? And so, yes, this would cover Carlos Avery. DNR may say it doesn't, but we're not gonna go in and enforce in Carlos Avery, but we might, if we get complaints, we might contact the DNR and say, "We have a cannabis smoking ban in the city and it applies within your grounds."
That was actually gonna be my question. Do we communicate that to, like, the DNR and to the businesses, like a Running Aces or something that where this...where they have private, you know, private property, but the public is invited in? Is that part of what has to happen with this, is that there's a notification? Or do we publish it and it's, you know, it's up to them to pick up on it from a published ordinance?
The statute doesn't require it. The league guidance suggests it, so...and I think it's a good suggestion that you have some communication around this. Clearly, you could adopt it tonight and roll it out over time because there's always the enforcement piece. You know, you're certainly gonna want the sheriff's deputies to know that this is now a regulation and then think proactively about how you communicate it to businesses.
Well, I think they shouldn't be...the DNR shouldn't be against it, you know, on a bunch of stone duck hunters blasting all over the place. I mean, you're not allowed...you're not supposed to be drinking while you're shooting, so you shouldn't be stoned either, I assume. So...
I think it's a reasonable assumption.
Yes. So I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance 2306, regulating the use of cannabis in public places as presented. Is there a second?
This is Janet, aye second.
Any other questions for Bill or any discussion?
I do, yeah, I do have one other question.
One more thing.
If, so if we're gonna ban it for, like, say, Running Aces, they have a license for alcohol, would they be able to get a license to allow their people to smoke cannabis?
I believe they would. I mean, what we'll do in terms of the rest of the regulation during the moratorium is give you those options. But any place that gets a proper license for cannabis use would be already exempted from this ordinance. So there's a carve-out for any place that ultimately gets a license for cannabis use. So more to come. You know, we'll probably have a workshop in connection with the whole...all the choices that you get to make over what your regulations include and what they don't. But for tonight, we've got two things covered. Well, we've got one thing covered and then when we adopt the moratorium, when you adopt the moratorium, we'll have another issue covered. And then you'll have a little bit of space of time to think about what level of the regulation you want to adopt.
Okay, thank you.
And the licensing thing is not to become effective till 2025, right? That's what they're still trying to put the agency together to do that work?
Yes, that's correct.
So they couldn't...nobody could be licensed at this point, at least unless you're on tribal land, right?
Right.
Yes, but they could put the licensing scheme together sooner than that, but they're giving local authorities like yourself the ability to have a moratorium until 2025 so you can decide how you wanna...it's a tier of regulations that kind of fit together. So there's some preemption of local authority. You can't totally prohibit it, but you can create reasonable regulations about where it can be and how many you're gonna have in your community. And I'm talking now about dispensaries.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one other thing. So say in the event you're at a concert at Running Aces, right? And you're staying in the hotel, they're still not gonna be able to utilize that product while they're in that controlled area?
Again, unless, under some regulation, cannabis use is permitted, then our ordinance doesn't reach that.
Okay.
So I have yet to see how that's gonna be regulated in like a concert setting. And good luck anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, seriously. Jesse can attest to that one.
I'll call for the vote.
Sorry. Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And I was alluding to trout air concerts.
And now on to our moratorium discussion and motion.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, as I noted, this does require a public hearing. What's interesting is when you adopt, all the other moratoria that you've adopted are under a separate statute and did not require a public hearing. But this statute specifically says you must have a public hearing. So this is the form of the moratorium. It's not unlike some of the others that you've adopted. You are essentially authorizing a study because you can't just have a moratorium without studying what it is you want to do. So you're authorizing a study and you're prohibiting a cannabis business until January of 2025.
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 2307.
Wait, wait.
Needs a public hearing. So what you're doing, the modification is you're calling for a public hearing. So the motion would be to call for a public hearing on ordinance...
There, I'll motion to call for the public. Is it still 2307?
No, that's the ordinance.
23...
It is. It's still number 2307.
202307.
Yep. So just strike "move to adopt" and insert "call for a public hearing."
I'll make the motion to call for a public hearing regarding ordinance 2307, an interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operations of cannabis business with the City of Columbus as presented. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions?
I just have a procedural question. So then do we adopt this ordinance with an effective date after the public hearing? Is that how that works? I'm just thinking because you have a number for the ordinance which we haven't adopted yet. So if you adopt another ordinance before, this one...
That's okay. This just retains that number.
Okay.
So the next ordinance would be '08.
Okay.
Yep. And this would be effective...this would be effective at the, you know, following the hearing. So it could be at the next meeting. I believe that's...it doesn't say how many days we need, so I think if we just give our standard notice, public notice.
But should we also tonight, after we do this call for the public hearing, adopt this ordinance, but then just change "aye"? Instead of saying on August 9th, we would make this ordinance effective upon completion of the public hearing? Or do you have to wait until the public hearing to do that?
You have to wait till the public hearing.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye. Sue, aye.
Ron, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And as you probably noted, your bylaws got bumped by all the cannabis discussions, so it took priority. But we'll have a draft set for you to look at at the next meeting. It'll be in your packet.
Thank you. Anything else, Bill?
That's it, thank you.
On to number 15, Mayor and City Council members report. Rob?
I'll report.
I have a question. So the letter that is in here from Rice Creek, are we gonna discuss that or is that just an informational thing?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, you're free to discuss it. I think the...that's the response of the district and if you have any direction, please tell us.
I have none at this time.
Well, I think it stinks, but I guess my question is, are we just...are we uniform in our opinion that we just have decided to give up on this? Or are we gonna respond to this? Because it's a letter that's not factually correct. And I don't...and I totally get that we've gone around and around with them and I don't know that we're gonna change their mind, but I wasn't sure if it was in here to be discussed or if it was just like FYI, we're done with it.
Well, I'll tell you the staff position.
Okay.
The staff position is we've done what we can and we have a door. I think, I mean, I would say there's something positive out of all this because we documented the heck out of our position. We presented it. It can never be said that we don't have a strong position. And the, you know, through the good efforts of staff and council and showing up, there is a door open for using credits in a public drainage project. So yet to be determined what that means, but they know that Columbus's position is that we ought to be treated favorably in that context. So the staff position is we've done what we can. We, you know, I'll say it on the record because it's been said many times, we don't have a legally binding contract for those credits. So we're kind of left with, you know, this response is what we get. But I, you know, just for my involvement, the involvement of the council, the involvement of Elizabeth, I feel good that we didn't just take the pat on the head and that we pushed back and that we made them, you know, document their position. I had a sense that, you know, I don't want to name names, but I'll just say the chair or the president wanted us to go away at the first meeting and we didn't, and we got this letter as a result, so.
So I don't disagree with anything you say, but I'm also a little worried that, so this letter stands and we don't...and we didn't respond to it, then what...then it presumes that what's in here is accurate, right? Because we haven't made any corrections. And when we went there, we did not request that we enter into an agreement. We requested a stinking meeting and they wouldn't even give us that. So this whole rest of this letter is referencing this agreement that we didn't request, but they say that we did, which is wrong. And it is, you know, our goal was never to maintain WMA access. That was the DNR's goal. So they attribute a goal that was achieved, but it wasn't one that we ever wanted. I mean, that wasn't on our list. We had two things, right? Don't flood our city and give us wetland credits to offset the...
From the bank that we helped agree.
That's right, right. So I mean, so the way that they state this, it's like it's not correct. And I feel like, you know, when they list what, you know, that they used 18.23 credits in this city, it's like, well, that's your job and you would've done that in any city. So don't throw that back to us as if that is something that we got from you and we should... we should be grateful for it, because that's, that's what you levy people and are paid to do. So I, I'm not, I am not proposing that we continue to fight them on this, because we're not going to win. And you're right, we don't have legal standing to win on this. And we knew that going into it, even though they don't think we did. But I feel uncomfortable just leaving this letter uncorrected. So I don't know. That's just my feeling.
Well, you're correct, Janet. Most of their suppositions are incorrect. They would not have had Browns Preserve, period, with their 20 or 40 credits or whatever if the mayor and Elizabeth and the council at the time hadn't agreed to do it. There would be no bridge in Forest Lake. There would be no Browns Preserve. There would be no credits. So Mr. President doesn't know what he's talking about, but you heard he was quite bilious and quite...
That's a perfect word. That actually is the perfect word to describe it. Good adjective.
I had a good English teacher 50 years ago, and he wouldn't listen. You presented your case. Elizabeth was astounding with her presentation. It was perfect. And he didn't care if our Lord was standing there. He wasn't going to listen. And he's not paying for the credits out of his own pocket. The taxpayers are paying for it, as they pay for every breath everybody on that board takes. So...
I mean, my take, my take home from all this is, there's an expiration date on their promise, promises, and we should remember that going forward.
Well, we should, the city should have gotten to this when we had other people on the board. You would have had this in a 15-minute meeting.
And in the future, we get documentation, right?
We had documentation. I mean, that part, even though they keep running, you know, they keep bringing it up that it's not legally binding, it's, it was an act of faith that this city took to the benefit of everybody else who participated, because there was not time to do it in a way that was going to be legally binding. And that MOU was the document that memorialized everybody's understanding of that and the good faith effort. And they thumb their nose at it and say, "Well, too bad. We've changed, we've changed our tune on this, so we're not, you know, and you can't do anything about it, because it's not legally binding." And it's like, you know, in terms of their priority to maintain a strong and cooperative relationship, I sure as hell wouldn't do it the way that they did it.
Well, those are just words they put in, because they don't know any better.
So...
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I can make a suggestion. I think the commitment is there. They know that this stung, and we made, we called them out on it. I look at this like when litigators are sending, you know, responses back and forth. At some time, they stop, because they know that their factual position is in the record, and we know that. And so they just simply stop, because the next communication invites another correction and communication. So if the council directs us to write something, we certainly will. But I just wonder if we're at that point where we've made our position clear, they've taken their position, they may have dressed it up with, you know, incorrect facts, but does it, I would ask this, does it change the fact that we've got a piece of paper that says that they will consider wetland credits in connection with a public drainage project in Columbus?
But they'll, they'll consider it with us paying for them. Well, that isn't any different than what everybody else does. I mean, so that doesn't give us anything. And I think that if their minutes reflected the story that we tried to tell them, then I would agree with you and say that it's memorialized, but it, they don't. So if you look at the minutes of the workshop when you were presenting, and even with Elizabeth presenting, I mean, it's just the same old stuff as what's in this letter. So when you go back and, you know, five years from now, if somebody says, you know, "We need to readdress this," or, you know, "This is another example of ABC," there isn't going to be anything that tells our story that's been documented, other than not even our minutes, which is why I'm blowing off steam now. So you make sure you get these in the minutes, Connor. You'll get more edits.
Do you want the spelling of bilious?
Yes. I love the word. Make sure you get that one in there, because it's a perfect description.
It's verbose, too.
Yeah. So I mean, I, like I said, I understand, and I have thought long and hard about this, about whether, you know, and I don't know what the right answer is, other than I feel like there is not a clear record of our side of it anywhere that you would ever be able to find a year from now.
But I wonder, just wondering out loud, if we write such a letter, will it ever get into the minutes? Will it become part of the record? I mean, I know the documents that we sent over have to be part of the record. They were part of the agenda material, so, you know, that's just a question. And, you know, we take direction from you, so if the council wants us to do something more, we will.
I think we won't do it at this time, but we'll...
I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, so you're not going to get an argument out of me. I just needed to put it out there.
And you are correct. So...
So we'll start referring to bilious.
Moving on to 15. Council members report. Rob?
I'll report.
Yeah.
I'm just going to quickly update you with where we're at with the Race, not the Race Creek, the Sunrise. There was a council meeting in Ham Lake on Monday, and they did discuss the JPA, and they did actually take a much softer approach to the whole thing than they have in the past. Mayor Kirkham has agreed to serve on our board, so they have not had an elected official on the board forever. And he acknowledged that part of the problem and part of the reason this has dragged down so long is because they haven't engaged, and the policymakers weren't there to hear it, and so therefore, they didn't have a clear picture of what we were trying to do. So that's, that's definitely a win. And then the two attorneys, Ham Lake's attorney and the Sunrise attorney, are negotiating the funding formula, which, the one that they want is the one we wanted, too. So if that's what we ended up on for Columbus, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it would actually be better for us. And, but I just don't know if we're going to get the rest of the cities to agree to that. And then the question about the unanimous ratification, I think there's been some really good work done by the attorneys to put sort of a cap on, you know, if their concern is that if they don't have unanimous ratification, then crazy jumps in the budget could get approved by three of the four communities. If they can get a, an agreement on a cap that would require unanimous, anything over that would require unanimous, that may very well appease Ham Lake, and we might be able to move forward on this, which would be great. So fingers crossed. We're still working on it, but I think we're getting closer to a resolution than we have for the last two years, so it's good.
Like, how soon? Month, or...
We told them that we needed to have this figured out by the end of August, because we need to, we need to move forward with the budget. And, you know, we are all, you know, we can, we can guess high for the preliminary levy, but nobody wants to add a whole bunch of dollars in their levy, you know, projections that they don't think they're going to need. So since our levies, our preliminary levies due at the end of September, we wanted, we wanted to know what direction we were going to go by the end of this month. And they committed to having this discussion again at their next council meeting in two weeks, so I think, I think we might make it.
So it could be done by the end of the month?
Could be.
Possibly.
Yep. That's what we're shooting for.
Yeah. Anything else?
No.
Sue?
No report.
Ron?
On August 6th, I went to the Whippet races and looked at their operation. I think it would have been better if we'd all would have been there before the permit. Not that I don't think they deserve the permit, but there is a lot of dog barking, but they were correct when they presented their presentation, that the dogs get all excited when they start moving to that box for that run. But it was pretty interesting, and I don't think it's that disturbing in the neighborhood, because I've talked to a few people there. There is a neighbor there that was pretty upset, I think. I don't know. I never talked to him. But it was interesting. If you get a chance, there's one coming up in September. Let's stop in. They're very welcoming, and the doors open, so...
Well, thank you for going.
They let us know.
I will. So they do have the Nationals in Menominee Falls, Wisconsin, in the end of August, so, I mean, they really value those dogs. I mean...
They're fun to watch run, aren't they?
Yeah.
They really move.
And they do. They go 35 miles an hour, but some of those people come from Canada that were there, Iowa, all over, so pretty interesting, so. I think it was a good move, we gave them the permit, so...
All right. Thank you. Public Works report. Jim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Connor? Communication report?
Just two quick updates. The first being the Coon Creek watershed vacancy that we put out for. I did not receive any notification of anyone applying, so it sounds like we don't have any action to take here this evening for that. The only other update would be that we mentioned it during the EDA meeting, but the newsletter is well on its way. I have a few more articles to finish up, but hopefully we'll get that tied up this week, next week, hopefully soon enough, and get that first draft out, so everybody can review it. Because, yeah, we are shooting for that end of August, beginning of September window, and turns out, we're already nine days into August, so it's coming up quick. So look forward to that soon.
Thank you. City Administrators report?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I just have an update from Joe Murphy about our property on Iverson Street. The property, I won't say the property owner, but the owner of the junk vehicles did show up in court on August 3rd. He did plead guilty. The judge did indicate that he would get 90 days in jail, but then stayed that order and allowed him to have until October 27th to clean the property up. And so I forwarded that email to Sean, and he's going to follow up with Joe and, you know, follow it closely, because at this point, if he violates the probation, because he's got also a probation sentence, then he will go to jail. Unfortunately, when they go to jail, they don't clean up, so we'd have to look at something else.
Elizabeth, is Sean going to follow up with the neighbors that have made complaints?
I think so. You know, I think we'll, you know what I mean, figure out a way to, you know what I mean, get that communicated out there, not to any particular person, but to the neighborhood.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is because a number of us have been contacted, and so I've been trying to direct those kinds of, you know, things back to Sean. So in this case, I know that most of this preceded his, you know, his employment here, but it would probably be best if he could follow up with those folks.
I would, I would agree. It's a matter of public record, but at least I'd be informed, and we would be proactive.
Okay, thanks.
Well, that's kind of good news. We just have to wait another two months, three months. Anything else, Elizabeth?
I have nothing further.
All right.
Hope you feel better.
Yep. Get well soon.
Thank you.
So announcements and reminders. Planning Commission, August 16th at 6:00. City Council, August 23rd at 6:00. City Council and Planning Commission joint meeting on September 6th at 6:00. And the whole calendar's on page 37. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hey, Mayor. One quick thing. I was just cross-referencing on page 37 of the agenda packet on the calendar of meetings. It's stating the 16th as a city council meeting and the 23rd as a planning commission. I think those need to be flip-flopped for an edit.
The council meeting is on the 23rd, and the planning commission is on the 16th. So if it's, if it's flip-flopped, then yes, it has to be reversed.
Yep, it is. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Anything else, anyone? How about a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Rob, second.
I'll call for the vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Sue, aye.
Ron, aye. Jesse, aye.